Commission meeting for October 28th will come to order. City Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Abraham.
Present.
Commissioner Galt.
Present.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Commissioner Wilson.
Present.
Mayor Kayler.
Present. Tonight, I've asked John Perkins to do our invocation for us. And Commissioner Galt, if you'll do the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you.
I'll rise.
Will you pray with me? "Lord God, thank you for the freedom that we have to govern ourselves. Thank you for the ability to think for ourselves. Lord, thank you for all the blessings that you've given us, the ones we know about and the ones we don't even think about. Lord, I thank you for all that you provide. In your shew's holy name we pray. Amen."
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
City Manager, any additions or deletions?
There are none.
Okay, tonight, we have a recognition and the Veterans Day Parade, which is coming up soon. And so, we have the Veterans Day Committee here tonight. If you would come forward, please. Hello?
Thank you very much for allowing me to come this evening and speak. I'd like to introduce the other folks that were with me. Mr. Robert Warden is another veteran that's with us. He's on the committee. Of course, you know Molly from the Parks and Recreation. We have Ms. Cheryl Bendick and Ms. Cindy Byrd from the Daughters of the American Revolution are on the committee also. At this time, I'd like to thank y'all for all the past support and everything that you've given for the Veterans Day Parade and for the Veteran of the Year Award, et cetera, and invite you again this year to come down on the 11th at 11 o'clock and join us as we have our parade to celebrate our Veterans Day. At that time, we will be introducing the Veteran of the Year and the Patriot Award winner for this year. And at 10:30, the ladies from the DAR will be handling their part of the program and everything. And if you, this time, I'd like to ask them to come forward and give you their little spill about our essays and et cetera.
Thank you.
The theme of this year's parade is called "Defending Freedom Protecting Dreams." And every year, an essay contest is sponsored, which we thank you for very much. We have the grades K through 2, 3 through 5, 6 through 8, and 9 through 12. And this year, we received 813 essays and pictures from 16 different schools. And the essay winners will be asked to ride on the city float again this year so that they can go through the parade and wave with the veterans. And Cindy has something she needs to say.
Well, Robert has already thanked you for your support of this. The students would not probably be given an opportunity to think about this subject if it were not for this essay. They might perhaps twice in their entire school career be asked to even think about veterans. So, this is a learning opportunity for them to continue every year, be asked to think on this subject. And we get to read them. You all don't get to read them. So, we see what the students are learning and the things that they say. And if you have time, I could read a portion of one of them. Would you like to hear one?
Please.
Okay, this student says, "Veterans have defended our freedom for many years. They have fought wars in many foreign countries. A lot of our soldiers gave their lives to protect our freedoms." Many, both of my papas fought in Vietnam. My dad fought and was a veteran also, but he didn't fight in war. But he was trained and ready to fight if needed. "I am thankful for the sacrifices the veterans and their families have made for our freedom. I'm glad they have a day, we have a day to thank them, but we should thank the veterans every day." So, this is what the students begin to assimilate in their lives and begin to learn, and we appreciate your continual support of this. And Mayor Kayler, we'd like to ask if you would like to give the awards again to the students this year? Okay?
I think it's, you know, it's really the highlight, in a way, of the Veterans Day Parade, to see those children and see their enthusiasm and their well-thought-out essays that they write.
Yes, and they do, they do learn from this experience.
Can you make those essays available to us to read?
Well, I guess we could. You, we, the winners are usually published in...
How many, how many essays were...
Eight hundred and thirteen.
Eight hundred and thirteen?
I don't think you want to read all of those. In fact, we're having to judge them over a week's time.
Hey, so...
But we could let you read some of the better ones if you'd like, as we...
I'm sure they're all great. I'm sure they are. I'll just let you handle that.
Well, I will tell you that we do our best to be impartial judges. We don't look at the names or the schools, where they're from, and we do our best to make sure that we just select the best writing from their heart. Some of them can't write very well, can't spell these days. They're not taught much spelling. But we overlook those kind of things and we look for the heart of what they write.
I'm sure they're wonderful. That one was. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice.
That's an idea. Read that, say.
Okay, we have a proclamation tonight for Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month. And we have Patricia Pearson with West Kentucky Pancreatic Cancer Action Network volunteer here, as well as, hi, Mrs. Foreman. Would both of you all like to come up? And if you have anyone else with you that would like to come up? I'll read this and present it to you, then if you would like to say a few words. "To all to whom these presents shall come, whereas in 2014, an estimated 46,420 people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States, and 39,590 will die from the disease. Whereas pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers, is the fourth-leading cause of cancer death in the United States, and is projected to become the second by 2020. And whereas pancreatic cancer is the only major cancer with a five-year relative survival rate in the single digits at just 6 percent. And whereas when the symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it's in the last stage. And 73 percent of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of their diagnosis, while 94 percent of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years. And whereas approximately 570 deaths will occur in Kentucky in 2014. And whereas the, I'm sorry with that word. Would you help me with that?
Recalcitrant.
"Whereas the Recalcitrant Cancer Research Act was signed into law in 2012, which calls on the National Cancer Institute to develop scientific frameworks, our strategic plans for pancreatic cancer and other deadly cancers, which will help provide the strategic direction and guidance needed to make true progress against this disease. Whereas the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network is a national organization serving the pancreatic cancer community in Paducah, Kentucky, and nationwide throughout a comprehensive approach that includes public policy, research funding, patient services, and public awareness and education related to the developing effective treatments and a care of pancreatic cancer. And whereas the good health and well-being of the residents of Paducah, Kentucky are enhanced as a direct result of the increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and research into early detection causes an effective treatment. Now therefore, I, Gail Kayler, Mayor of the City of Paducah, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2014 as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month." And I'm sure that most people's lives have been touched in some way by this deadly disease.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Kayler, for issuing the proclamation. We certainly appreciate it. November is Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month, and I would like to ask all of you to help us spread this awareness by wearing purple a lot in November, particularly November 13th. November 13th is Global Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Day, not just across the U.S., but across the globe. And this is the first time for us to have a global day. So, especially on November 13th, I would like, like to ask everyone to wear purple, to take pictures, share on social media, and on November 13th, hashtag those photos with World Pancreatic Cancer Day and hashtag Purple For a Purpose. Currently, pancreatic cancer is the fourth-leading cause of cancer death in the United States. By 2020, it will be the second-leading cause of cancer death, surpassing breast cancer and colon cancer. And that being said, it's the deadliest of all cancers because it's the only one that has a five-year survival rate of just 6 percent. And in the state of Kentucky, it's not even that much. There's no early detection, there's no screening. And right now, it's time for us to not only be aware that pancreatic cancer exists, but be aware that we need to get much-needed funding so that we can enable scientists to find an early detection and screening options and change that survival rate. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, I have a presentation tonight.
I'll get up there eventually.
That's, that's good. Gretchen, it's good to have you tonight here and to have Hillary here. And I know you all have been good friends for many years. And I know, you know, that you have been so supportive of her as she's gone through this process and, and how she's turned her life around, and you've seen her turn her life around.
Yeah, well, death do us both. Thank God, death didn't come then.
That's right. That's what a good friend is for. So, I'm here tonight to give Officer Gretchen Morgan, Morgan, a Duchess of Paducah. And I wanted you to join your friend here as a fellow Duchess.
Thank you.
Yay, thank you. "I hereby in furthest honor with all the rights, privileges, and responsibilities thereto appertaining, and testimony whereof, I have caused these letters to be made patent and the seal of the city to be herein to affix, done at Paducah the 28th day of October in the year of our Lord 2014." Congratulations, Officer Morgan, and appreciate everything that you do for the community and for the wonderful award that you all got.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
My turn. Still love applause. Who doesn't?
I'll mention it. For those that you, that you didn't know, we received the Enterprise Award at Kentucky League of Cities for our Heads Up, Don't Be Intexticated program. I point to Hillary and she says, "No, it's our program, not my program." So, we received that award. It was a great honor, and I think we get $1,000 to, to spend to develop the program. So, I'm looking forward to that as well.
To keep going around bossing everybody around.
Keep on, Hillary.
Thank you.
Now, 33, well, soon 34, I've been bossing people around for 34 years.
Keep on. Thank you, guys, for being here. Thank you, Hillary. It's good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go into our meeting. Commissioner Abraham, the minutes, please.
I move that the reading of the minutes for the October 14, 2014, and October 21st, 2014, city commission meetings be waived, and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the city clerk be approved, as written.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. We'll go on to appointments tonight. Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby appoint Edward Musselman to replace Jackie Smith, who has resigned as a member of the Paducah River Front Development Authority. This term will expire April 9th, 2017.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Kayler in appointing Edward Musselman as a member of the Paducah River Front Development Authority.
Second.
Okay.
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. City Manager and I met with Edward and Megan this afternoon, so I think he's going to be a great addition to the PRDA Board. Very, he's very supportive of downtown, of the riverfront, of everything that we've been working on. So, seems to really get it. So, it'll be good to have him there. Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners... We voted on that, didn't we? Voted on that?
Yes.
Okay. Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby appoint Jeff Holland to replace R.L. Rushing, whose term has expired, to the Paducah-McCracken County Riverport Authority. This term will expire September 26, 2018.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Kayler in appointing Jeff Holland to the Paducah-McCracken County Riverport Authority.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. Excited to have Jeff on the Riverport Authority Board. So, I think he'll make a good addition to that board. He's such a nice man. I think he'll be a good board member. Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby appoint Edward Healy to the Electric Plant Board to replace Raymond McLennan, who has resigned. This term will expire February 6, 2016.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Kayler in appointing Edward Healy to the Electric Plant Board.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. And I'd just like to talk a little bit about this appointment. The statute that governs the eligibility for service on the Electric Plant Board is KRS 96.7402 and 4. And that statute provides that an appointee to the Board must be a citizen, taxpayer, and legal voter of the City of Paducah, cannot be indebted to the City either directly or indirectly, cannot be a surety on the official bond of any officer of the City, cannot be related within the third degree, that means parent, child, brother, sister, niece, nephew, grandparent, or grandchild, to the mayor or a member of the City Commission, and cannot have held public office within the last two years before the appointment. So, just the requirements for the Electric Plant Board makes it a challenge to find the right person, the qualified person for that. I feel like we've, we've got that with Ed Healy. He's, he's been in the finance business most of his life, and I felt, I really felt like, right now, the Power Board, the Electric Plant Board, needed someone with good financial business sense, more so than the engineering portion of it. So, I think he'll bring a lot to the Board and help with some of those tough decisions they're making. I did have a list of questions that I asked each candidate, and I did interview seven, seven different people for the Board. One of them had to be disqualified because he's a member of another Board. I thought he would have been an excellent Board member, but he, if you're on a Board that's appointed by the mayor or the judge, you cannot serve on the Power Board, even if it's been under two years since you were off that Board. So, some of the, excuse me, some of the questions I asked them, and some of these questions I got from input from local citizens, they weren't all my questions. "Are you willing to subject yourself to the arena of public debate and yet also be willing to make and defend objective decisions which you believe to be in the best long-term interest of our citizens and community? What three specific traits or skill sets would allow you to become a positive contributor to the process? Describe how you would approach the issues facing Paducah Power in our community. Are you willing to give regular update reports to the City? Do you understand anything about how utility finance works? Can you read complex financial statements? Describe how you see your role on the Electric Plant Board during the current crisis and how you envision your role developing in the long term with Paducah Power. Given the current Paducah Power system situation that they're in, why do you feel you would be uniquely qualified to serve on this Board? Explain what you believe to be in the benefits of public ownership of a local electric utility." What are your thoughts on the role of the General Manager of Paducah Power and the division of responsibilities between the General Manager and the Electric Plant Board? So, those were just some of the questions that I posed to those candidates, and we had a thorough process. I had, I had four candidates that would have been good. So, I really felt, though, in the end, that Mr. Healy fit the, fit the role the best. Didn't have to twist his arm too much. Had to get his wife's eye in on it. And it is, it's a big job.
And we just affirmed it, so it's, he's in.
Yeah, that's right. All right, so, we'll go on to motions. Commissioner Galt, please.
I move that the following documents be received and filed. Documents, certificates of liability insurance, Hefflin, Inc., Ivets Plumbing Contractors, Inc., Lonnie Wiggins Concrete, Schmidt Concrete, Inc. Letter of Assistance with Fluor Federal Services, Inc., Deactivation Project for Police Department Services, City of Paducah Police and Firefighters Pension Fund, valuation as of July 1st, 2014, actuarial report, statement of governmental accounting standards numbers 26, 67, and 68, review of actuarial valuation as of July 1st, 2014, City of Paducah Appointed Employees' Pension Fund Statement of Governmental Accounting Standards Number 27, 67, and 68, Comprehensive Health Benefit Plan premiums for calendar year 2015, including premiums for optional dental and vision care for employees of the City of Paducah.
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. I have a resolution tonight. I move that a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, Supporting the Expansion of Dippin' Dots by Rebating the 1% Payroll Tax on Certain KEDFA Program Eligible Positions Be Adopted." So, we have Dippin', Dippin' Dots that's doing an expansion, and they're asking for payroll tax rebate from the City as well as from the state of Kentucky. They have about 30, they will have 30 new full-time employees with an average wage of between 1088 and 1251 per hour. It's a good local company that's expanding, and I think one of the things, the goals that we have here in the City is to help existing businesses expand their companies. So, this is what we're doing tonight. City Clerk?
I need a second.
Second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. Municipal Order, Commissioner Wilson, please.
Upon the recommendation of the City Manager, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah order that the personnel changes on the attached list be approved.
Second.
Hi, Steve.
Evening, Mayor. Commissioners, I'd point your attention to the last item in your list, which is circled. It looks a little odd, given the change in the hourly rate. It's because the employee is, is going from a 24/48-hour schedule, which is 2,912 hours a year, to a 20/80. So, it's, it's not as steep as an increase as it looks because he's going to be working 800 and some less hours a year. And this is the first time we've had this position. This is one of the newly-created positions in the, in the department, and we're, we're happy and excited for him to get started.
And I'd just like to say that, you know, I've gotten to know Nathan Taylor, who's, who's resigning. I know he's going to a position that's much better for him financially, but we will miss him.
Yes, we have an entire department called Engineering Public Works, but at the end of the day, there's only two licensed professional engineers that worked in the department. Nathan was, was one of them. So, that position is, is currently being advertised, and we hope to replace him as soon as we can.
And he just quietly did his job.
Very, very...
Did a good job.
Was here for six, just about six years. Did a very good job for us.
And when is his last day, Rick? Friday? So, if you all have a chance to stop by and tell Nathan, we appreciate his work here. Be good.
Thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Authorizing the Application for a 2015 Kentucky Litter Abatement Grant Through the Kentucky Division of Waste Management for the Engineering Public Works Department's Street Litter Abatement Program Be Adopted."
Second.
Rick?
Any questions on this?
Does anyone have a question?
Do you self-explain?
These are, these are monies that are granted to us through our street sweeping process that we run annually. It just helps offset some other costs.
Thank you. How many street sweepers do we have?
Two.
So, they have a large territory to cover.
About 240 miles, well, that's 240 miles of total streets, but not all of them have curbs and gutters, so, several, several miles to cover at 7 miles an hour.
Right now, they have an important function because of the leaves that collect in the gutters and then into the sewers and...
Actually, that's, that's just to pick up the residual. That's not the primary piece of equipment.
Yeah, but I see them picking up the leaves this morning.
It does, it does do some, yeah.
So, I'm sorry. So, that's, that's the truck that, that's right against the curb with the rotating brushes.
I call it scrubbing bubbles.
Right, right.
The circular brush that, you know, pulls it...
Yeah. So, it pulls...
It pulls the debris out of the curb if the pavement is flush with a curb. This is another program that, for example, when the pavement is much higher than the curb and gutter itself, it won't, it won't pull it out. That's why we're doing the curb and gutter program as well.
Thank you. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. Commissioner Galt, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Amending Municipal Order Number 1795," entitled, "A Municipal Order Establishing a Policy for Use of Spending Credits Towards the Purchase of Certain Benefits Such as Health, Dental, or Vision pursuant to the City's Group Health Insurance Plan for the 2015 Plan Year to Change the Employer Contribution Amount From $2,350 to $2,850 Be Adopted."
Second.
Last time I was here and asked you to establish that rate, I was, I was wrong. It was, the proper rate was not 2,350, it's 2,850. Tried my best to blame the clerk or anyone else. Can't. It was simply my fault. I wrote that municipal order incorrectly. 2,350 only applies to a very small group of our employees that are in a special category, the vast, of the 40 waivers or so. The proper amount is 2,850. I'd like to ask you to correct that mistake of mine in that previous municipal order.
Thank you, Steve. Thanks for admitting that. City Clerk?
Yeah. Yes, thank you. Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Galt.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. Okay, Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Approving and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute the Statement of Compliance with National Bridge Inspection Standards, Bridge Posting Requirements for Paducah, Kentucky, Certifying Bridges Within the City Limits of Paducah Are Posted with Safe Load Capacities Be Adopted."
Second.
Mayor Commission, this is just some manual paperwork, whereas the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet actually inspects all the bridges and box culverts in the community and those that are, need to be rated, make sure that they're posted with the proper, I guess, capacities. And the only bridge that you have is the 24th Street Bridge off of 28th Street between 28th and 25th Street heading over toward Elmwood Court. It's over Cross Creek.
The 24th Street Bridge between 28th and what?
25th.
Okay.
It's really an odd section of town because we actually have one numbered street that is perpendicular to the other numbered streets. is perpendicular to the other numbered streets.
All right. City clerk.
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Gault.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. Ordinances adoptions. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance, an ordinance accepting the bid of Swift Roofing Incorporated for roof replacement for the Paducah Police Department and Fire Station Number 2, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah accepts the bid of Swift Roofing Incorporated in the amount of $227,775 for roof replacement for the Police Department and the Fire Station Number 2, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same.
Second. We've already discussed these. City clerk.
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Gault.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Accepting the Rates for Stop-Loss Insurance Coverage with Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield for the Group Health Insurance Plan for the City of Paducah, Kentucky, for the 2015 Calendar Year, and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Contract for Same." This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah accepts the rates offered through Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield for stop-loss insurance coverage for the Group Health Insurance Plan for the City of Paducah, Kentucky. Effective January 1st, 2015, the stop-loss rates are as follows. Individual stop-loss, $175,000, maximum city liability per person with a monthly cost of $92.98 per member, and an aggregate stop-loss, $229,679, maximum city liability of total claims combined with the monthly cost of $6.29 per member. Further, the mayors who are authorized to execute a contract with Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield for the stop-loss coverage.
Second.
City clerk.
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Gault.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Execute an Agreement Between the City of Paducah and Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield." This ordinance is summarized as follows. The mayor is hereby authorized to execute an agreement between the City of Paducah and Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield as the city's third-party administrator to provide claims administrative services related to the city's health insurance plan. The effective date of this agreement is January 1st, 2015, and ending December 31st, 2015.
Second. City clerk.
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Gault.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. City managers' report.
I'll comment on a couple of things. Steve Irvin's not here tonight, but the planning department hosted a very successful conference in Paducah, the Kentucky Heritage Council, over the weekend, and during Steve's spare time, he and his staff hosted the Fountain Avenue Annual Picnic. So it was a very busy department, and, and a lot of good work was, was done by that staff over the weekend. The 911 Board has submitted another round of questions to the Kentucky State Police regarding the proposal to provide 911 services to Paducah and McCracken County. So I think it's well that, that, that be properly vetted and, and answers obtained to questions asked prior to the time that any determination is made as to future direction for that. So that is ongoing as, as it should be, perhaps taken a little longer than anticipated, but nonetheless being thoroughly reviewed before decisions made. Lastly, executive session, we need a short executive session tonight on, on two matters, one related to economic development and one related to personnel.
Any commissioners' comments tonight? I know you're leaving here after the meeting for a forum, so good luck.
Sponsored by the NAACP and Human Rights Commission.
At the Jerry Civic Center.
Jerry Civic Center, I think it's already underway.
So will you get there?
They put us last, so.
I think we're not scheduled until, what, 8:30?
8:30.
Okay. So anyone out there that would like to attend that?
I think the reception's 6:00 to 6:30. It starts at 6:30.
Okay. And I'd just like to ask everyone to have a safe and happy Halloween, and to be careful when you're out trick-or-treating on Friday night.
And Jefferson will be closed? Is that what I read? Between 19th and 25th Street.
All right, anything else? All right, well, let's, who has the executive session?
I have it. I move that the Board go into closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topic, issues which might lead to the appointment dismissal or discipline of an employee as permitted by KRS 618101F. A specific proposal by a business entity where public discussion of the subject matter would jeopardize the location, retention, expansion, or upgrading of a business entity as permitted by KRS 61.8101G.
Second. City clerk.
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Gault.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Kayler.
Aye. So we will not be coming back to take any action. Meetings adjourned.